Okay. I have six at one. All right, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to bring this meeting to order. So let's start with Lori.
Sorry, Dr. Seaman here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here, and the mayor cannot make this meeting. She sends her regrets. She will, she always tries to be here for all of our meetings, so we will miss her. Dr. Leclerc, before I make my announcement, do you have any announcements that you want to share right now?
I do, just a few quick ones.
Okay.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Pat Bruff and Bert Gardner have completed a new video update of the progress to date of our new school, Mountain View School. So if you have not had the chance to view that yet, take a look. It's on, I think you can find the link on any of our Facebook pages, and we'll be uploading that the next day or two on our district website. But it's a nice view of the school. And does your child still need a flu vaccine? Our nursing department here at school is putting together a clinic for East Hampton students. More information will be coming out in the next few days from the nurses. So be on the lookout for that in case you are still trying to wrap that up for your child. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to start this meeting, even though we're going to have public speak in a minute, I am going to start this meeting by reading a letter from a resident in East Hampton who, who is very ill, and their family is ill. And so I am going to read this before we begin public speak. Please pardon my language. Everyone has an opinion. Well, here goes. Now that it appears that I may survive, as I cough so badly, my ribs feel like they are cracked. It is 2:30 a.m., and my also COVID-positive 14-year-old daughter has just woken me up because her COVID rash is raging again. To buy us more time between Benadryl pills, we are trying an oatmeal baking soda bath. My heart breaks for her. Upstairs, I hear one son with a barking croupy, out-of-control cough as he sleeps. I go check on my husband in bed. No, 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 get off your back. So I fail in an attempt to roll him on his side so he does not collect fluid in his lungs. I sigh a little as I walk out of my bedroom. I have missed my bed so much these last two weeks, but I must stay upright so my lungs do not fill. Being overweight and over 60 certainly puts me at a greater risk. I go back in the living room now. We decide together that a cool shower helped my daughter, my girl, and we will try only one Benadryl to make it through the night. New COVID quarantine rules are possibly unveiled. What does this mean to me? Too tired to care, will revisit in the morning. Please, God, please keep our lungs clear for one more night. Please help me to be less angry that I've been more careful than anyone I know since March, yet my family might die. I have not been in a grocery store since March. My husband has been three times. We order all groceries for delivery. My kids have been to no fun events. We have not gone to a zoo, a beach, a movie, a mall. I mean nothing. Yet here I sit sobbing because one person infected my entire family at a place that was supposed to protect us. To be in school, sorry, I'm skipping a line. Whose fault is it? Who does one blame? So as everyone sits here in judgment that kids need to be in school, please pardon my language. No shit. However, remember how parents like to say, "Science says kids don't get it unless they have underlying health issues." They're wrong. Sports are needed for mental health, of course. But if they die, their mental health might just be secondary, a secondary cause of death. My child is beginning to stop pacing and is starting to nod off. Time for me to sleep for a few hours before it starts all over. I need to stop sobbing because I'm so done with this. But oh, wait, no, I'm not. I need to parent these three minions that I stood before judge and promised I could raise. So yeah, you all stand on your soapbox and tell me, tell everyone to throw these kids right back in school. Me? Well, I will pray that we all simply wake up in the morning. Just my opinion. Okay. So I'd like to open up public speak. And I ask that you state your name and keep it two, three minutes. And raise your hand and signal if you would like to talk. And I'm looking, I see Dan. Dan raised his hand.
Hello. Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Dan Peral, and I have two children that are in the Hampton Public School system. My 15-year-old son Connor and my four-year-old son Josh. I'm here tonight to talk to you about my younger son Josh, who is in the Special Education Pre-K Rise Program at Maple Street School. Josh is autistic. He's nonverbal, and he's now been learning remotely for the past eight months, which we are extremely concerned about. First, I'd like to give you a quick background on our amazing little guy. Shortly after Josh's birth, his lungs stopped working, and he was shipped from Cooley to Bay State, where we were told there was nothing they could do to help him. He was then shipped to Boston Children's for a lung bypass. He was on life support, placed into a medically induced coma. Through many prayers and the fight of this little boy, he pulled through as Boston Children saved his life. We are blessed. Then at the age of two, Josh was diagnosed with autism. He was placed in early intervention, had 16 hours of in-person therapy a week. This was a combination of early intervention and private ABA therapy. At the age of three, when his early intervention services ended, we were introduced to the Special Needs Program at Maple Street School. Sarah Motak and her amazing staff have helped us navigate this new world. We were then quickly introduced to the amazing Marcy Powers. Marcy is Josh's amazing Rise teacher and a true gift to the Hampton Special Education Program. I cannot say enough good things about the amazing work that Marcy and her wonderful classroom aides provide to the children of the Rise program. Along with that, Josh also receives an hour each week of occupational and speech therapy at the school. We quickly started seeing great progress with Josh. We're excited about the improvements he was making. In March of this year, we finally got approved for an evaluation for a speech device, which was going to help with his progress with his speech. The day the appointment was made was the day he stamped and closed for in-person learning for COVID-19. This was devastating, blow to us and a major setback for our son. But we decided to remain positive. We always, and we went to the remote model for not just school, but also for all of his in-person ABA therapy, which he was previously receiving in person at home. My wife and I, but really mostly my wife, were doing about 12 to 16 hours a week of combined Zoom therapy in school, just trying to keep Josh at a level and not going backwards. To say it was a challenge to do a Zoom meeting for therapy or school is a massive understatement. But we took it on, though, and kept the remain, and remained positive. We kept pushing through the first, for the first couple of months, but it was getting harder and harder to keep Josh with any type of focus and growth, and his skills were stopping. We were now just trying to focus on retaining the skills he had developed. Two months turned into three, then four, then five, and finally, September was here. There was a light. At least we figured he stamped it would support in-person for special populations. But unfortunately, we were told October. Josh was now at seven months of no in-person learning. And then it got pushed back again, and you all eventually know the story. They returned at the end of October. In just three short weeks, back in school, developing a routine, we started to see growth in Josh immediately. Out of nowhere, the emergency November school committee meeting, it was taken away and pushed back to remote again for Josh. I wish you could all understand the, how devastating this is to our family and the families of all the special needs populations. I understand the worries of COVID-19. I'm a frontline worker. I work in radiology at Cooley Dickinson and at Valley Medical. I work with COVID patients. To be honest with you, COVID doesn't scare me. It's my son's future that does. I'm scared he will never talk. He'll never say daddy. He'll never be in a normal classroom. Read a book, write his name, grow up to leave our house. Your decisions and votes directly affect the future of my child and others. So my question I ask you tonight is, if this was your child's story, what would you do? We have these amazing resources, but we're unable to get to them. It's painful, and frankly, it's hard to swallow. I want to leave you tonight. Just so you will see, this is my son Josh, that's on his first day going back to school. I ask you to please think about him and your Rise classmates. I ask you to reconsider your vote to keep special populations remote, and please, please bring them back to in-person schooling. Give us, give Josh a chance to access these amazing resources. We plead with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm going to scroll through. Please signal if you want to speak. I'm not seeing any hands. Oh. Candace Tasher. Okay, Candace.
Hi, my name is Candy Tasher. I am the one who wrote the letter that Cindy read at the beginning of the meeting. I'm sorry, I can't put my face on. I'm still in my pajamas and coughing like a fiend, and we're still struggling in our family. I just wanted to say, just as Mr. Pearl said, the kids need to be in school and give this child a chance. I absolutely get it. I've worked in schools my whole adult life. I have to say, though, I have three teens. This is my second family. I put two biological kids through the system many, many, many years ago, who are, I'm now a grandparent. We have adopted four teenagers, one of which is a grown-up who's been through East Hampton Schools. And I have two at the high school now and one in his last year at the middle school. Of course, kids need to be in school. Of course, they want to play sports. Of course, the special needs population is suffering. However, I'm wondering if anyone who is asking for their kid to go in school have had a house full of COVID. Our family has never been so ill in my entire life. My daughter-in-law is a nurse practitioner, and every day she stuck her head in my Zoom to see how I was breathing, to see how my husband, who has asthma, was breathing. I had emergency family members bringing things to us constantly for my daughter's COVID rash, which they, we couldn't fix it. It was from her toes going up to her left eye. They had to put her on steroids. They say it's going to last 12 days at the end of all the other symptoms. So all I want to say is, if you had it in your home, you might put your life before school. My kids are doing amazing in remote. The teachers are amazing. And if it's all we can have right now to save lives, maybe it's all we can have. Hey, I have 90 days now where I'm not going to get sick, I guess. My kids could play sports now, but I still don't think it's the best thing. It was the worst day of our lives, so thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm scrolling through again. Linda B. Linda B?
Hi, it's, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Linda Brodhurst. I have a senior. I've spoke before, and I just have one point to make. For the woman that just spoke and you read her letter, I'm very sorry that her family is going through this. I personally know some people that have had COVID. I know it's difficult. And she is doing the remote, and it's working for her, and that's great. I'm very happy for that. The only thing I don't understand is why it has to be an either/or. We've got parents saying, "I want my kids to go back." We have parents saying, "I don't want my children back." Why can't it be both ways? If the parents don't want their children in the school, they, they can keep them home and do remote. And if you want your child to school and the school will open, then your child goes. I don't understand why it's, it's this either/or, and we can't let the parents decide for their own children, for their own families, what's best for them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kiri Damon?
Hi, good, sorry. Hi, good evening. I'm sorry, I'm trying to undo my camera here. I just want to, I wrote to you all, but I also just wanted to thank you again for the tireless work that this committee is engaged in, helping to give leadership and guidance to our students. I'm a parent of four kids in the district. I work in healthcare. I, you know, I, I understand, and I'm so sorry to hear about the former, the caller that was just on the line and the letter that she shared. And I know families are experiencing difficulties. We're all experiencing difficulties on, on different levels. I'm, I'm here in, in support of Dan's message for his son and, and really expanding options for families and, and kids that have now lost, you know, nine months of in-person instruction. And, you know, we're a lucky family. My, my kids are doing okay. But I'm, I'm certainly watching what's happening and, and scared for how this is impacting their potential future and, and what comes next for them. And, and I know we can, I know we can do this, and I know we can do it safely. And I also, my, my kids are also student athletes, and that's also a really important piece of, you know, their academic life. And I, much like the fall, I hope you give those student athletes a chance to, to connect. And I know it'll look and feel different. It should, to protect the safety of all those involved. And I just, you know, I just want you to look at all of those options as a possibility. Two of our daughters played volleyball this fall for the high school and had a wonderful experience. It wasn't exactly what it looked like in years past, but it was the most connected and engaged in their academic life that we have seen them in, in several months. So anyway, once again, thank you all for, for everything you all are doing. I appreciate the difficulty of all of these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rachel?
Hi, everybody. My name is Rachel, and I've been a resident of East Hampton for quite a while. And both of my children are in the East Hampton Public Schools, which I've been impressed with at all levels, you know, elementary and middle and high school. Gosh, you know, I definitely want to acknowledge what a really difficult time this is. I can't imagine a school committee had ever thought that they would have to deal with such a huge crisis in our system. So I definitely want to acknowledge all the hard work that you are all doing. And I want to also acknowledge people who've had really difficult times during this pandemic, being ill and financial hardship. It's safe to say that all of us are, are really trying our best to get through some challenging times. I think I just wanted to say, and unfortunately, I wasn't well-prepared, to make a statement. I have, I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, and I've worked in pediatrics for over 25 years now. And it's, it's really hard to know what the best thing is for our, our children and their future. I know clearly that we need to balance physical health and also emotional health. The amount of core emotional wellbeing that we are seeing in our community and, and our office is astounding. And I guess I'm, was impressed to hear, you know, Dr. Leclerc speak at one of the previous meetings about all of the work of trying to help keep our kids safe in the school. And I'm having lots of faith and trust in that possibility. Clearly, the numbers at this point in time of COVID seem very challenging. But I guess I'm being hopeful at some point, spring or beyond, that maybe that will shift and there will be a possibility for us to have that experience. I think that mostly I'm concerned, in particular for the adolescent population, just trading one pandemic for another, for kids to have a lack of focus on being able to be independent in the world and to have solid mental health to get through their days. It's, it's been pretty devastating to see the effect of COVID and seeing them isolated at a time in their life that they really should be moving forward. And I really hope that that will be a consideration as the committee moves forward as numbers may safely allow for our kids to come back together in a safe way in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking, anybody else? Please make sure you signal before we close, because once we close public speak, we will not be able to call on you. Okay. I do not see anybody. All right, I'm going to scroll back through, and if no one is signaling, we are going to close public speak. Okay. And. All right, Marissa, did you see anybody? I see no one. Okay. Janine, Janine's iPad raised her hand. Janine?
Yes. Hi, my daughter is a senior at East Hampton High School, and she's also a student athlete. She wrote a letter, I believe, to the superintendent and the school committee regarding her wish to participate in winter sports. And I know I have talked to Mr. Evans, I've talked to Mr. Miller. And to me, the hope is not looking too good because of the numbers. But I just wanted to share that she is a senior. She is looking at D1 schools that are recruiting her, and she's competing with kids all across the country who are in school and, and doing their sports. She's right now, can't speak. Otherwise, I would have had her reading her letter to all of you. I wish someone would have read it. It would be great. She's at Big Y, working, her second job. So my voice is for her, and she would love to get back into the classroom. I second what Ms. Brodhurst said. There should be a choice based on every family's circumstances, every family's unique criteria. I, I am working in Westfield at a school. My husband's a first responder. We know what it's like. And I just want to advocate for her to get back in school and have somewhat of a normal second semester. Let's put it that way. If we just push it off till January after the holidays, I would be happy for half a year. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Scroll through one last time. Going. Going. Okay, I do not see anybody else. So we are going to close public speak, and we're going to move on with the rest of the meeting. And I just misplaced my holiday. Okay, Subcommittee updates. I am assuming that we have a big policy Subcommittee. People will just have to bear with us when we read through these. But before we do that, Maren, we've scheduled a finance coming up?
Correct. We have a finance Subcommittee meeting on Monday to be able to review closing out of last fiscal year, current fiscal standing, and just the very initial discussion about the future planning for next fiscal year.
Okay. And Jonathan? Okay, Jonathan, anything from the collaborative?
Do, I wanted to defer to Marissa, though, who had her hand up, I saw.
Oh, okay. Marissa?
Cindy, I'm, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but just to keep things sort of.
Okay, you're very soft. Is there a way to turn your volume up a little?
Is this better at all?
Little bit.
Do it this way, perhaps this will be better.
Much better, that's perfect.
We had talked about it our last meeting, acknowledging email correspondence as a new practice.
Yeah.
And I didn't see that on the agenda this time. So I just was wondering when would be the appropriate time to do that.
I, I think I, I would put it under, we could move other to right after policy Subcommittee reports if we want. There's no reason why we can't just switch that.
Yeah, typically, there is a given correspondence item on the agenda, but I don't see it this week. So whenever, I just wanted to ask.
We'll move it right after policy Subcommittee reports. Okay? Jonathan?
Sure. So we did have a collaborative meeting at the end of last month before the holidays. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. The kind of, the big thing that I wanted to share was, we always get a presentation at, at those meetings like we do at our meetings here, you know, something about what CES is doing. And we received a presentation from the Director of the Migrant Education Program, which recently, so it serves the state. It recently shifted to CES from a different collaborative. And I was just really taken aback by the work that they do and wanted to kind of share it with you folks and with sort of the district and our administration. So as the name suggests, they work with migrant families. It's easy to kind of misconstrue that as immigrants. It does not specifically refer to that. It's anybody, any family who is moving for economic purposes, essentially. There's a couple parts of eligibility. There has to be a migratory youth, which means they moved into the district within 36 months, and they live with either a migratory agricultural worker or migratory fisher. And then there's the migratory worker part of the eligibility, which is someone who moved residents within the past 36 months. That's very specific terminology, because sometimes you move, but you don't actually leave the city. So it had to have been for economic necessity, and they have to be engaged in qualifying work. So I just wanted to pass along, they suggest the district should be screening these folks at the same time as the home language screener that I imagine we do. And the program will provide all the materials for that. There's also a web-based referral form available for literally anyone who wants to use it. It doesn't just have to be the district. So if folks were out there who thought that there were families in need that they know, they could try to share the information that way. They serve about 400 to 600 students a year. And these are, you know, some of the most disenfranchised and overlooked students that I think are out there. Closest to us, there's some folks who are out in the Hadley and Amherst area, which is not that far. And I wouldn't be surprised if there were, in fact, some closer to our area. And I want to pass this all along to make sure that there are no students falling through the cracks. And I'd be happy to answer more questions from folks in the community or folks working in the district who need help getting directed to this. But suffice to say, they're, they're interested in having any district reach out to them with questions and to help collaborate. I'll pass along that there was, we received our annual report from CES, which is like 100-plus-page document, and I can't say I've finished reading that yet. But there is oftentimes a sort of snapshot brochure that kind of pulls together the highlights of their work, which I will be sure to share with you folks when that time comes. I want to pass along that on their minds, sort of, this opportunity, is this opportunity that the pandemic has kind of presented to. is this opportunity that the pandemic has kind of presented to, as the director said, kind of mess with the regularities of education to kind of answer the question of how do we make schooling better? And certainly as we move forward with the strategic planning process that CES will be doing over the next year, I'm really excited to see what comes of that and how it might impact our district as we think about better schooling in the future. So lastly, you know, I guess I'll just put out there because it's such an important topic at present as we need to talk a little bit about in-person versus remote, in-person versus remote learning. Obviously, they're in a very complicated situation, maybe even more so than ours in some cases. Keeping in mind, they have a DYS contract that serves incarcerated students who very much can't go home to learn. They also serve some of the highest need students in our districts. So most of their students are at this point remote. I anticipate that they will be moving more students into a remote setting as we move forward here, although they're figuring out exactly what thresholds they're looking at to do that. Keeping in mind, though, that the academies where they serve these students are 24 and 13 total students respectively, so it is very much a different kind of circumstance. But just to say, you know, they're grappling with the same challenges and trying to help these students that have such substantial education needs while also keeping the students and educators safe. So that's that, we'll be meeting again end of next month. And next, you know, beginning of next year, we're starting in earnest with the search for the new executive director. The farewell to the current one is tomorrow, I might have mentioned that at previous meeting. So that's that.
All right, thank you. Laurie, do we have an update? And then we'll go on to Shannon, because hers is going to be the longest.
We have been meeting weekly for the COVID response team, but Dr. Leclerc is going to present our findings from the past meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Shannon, time for you and your hard work.
Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Ready.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add I J N D.
I second that.
Meran?
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add I J N D B.
I second that.
Meran?
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add I J N D C.
I second that.
Meran? Goldstein, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to delete K M A.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Sorry, Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add I D.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to update per M A S C, I K F.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add E C A.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add J L C B.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to delete J E C.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add J F.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add J L C A.
Laurie Garcia, oh, I second that, sorry.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to update per M A S C, J F A B F.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to add E B C S.
I second that.
Meran Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
And before we go on to Marissa with correspondence and gifts, I want to, I meant to say this in the beginning, we will be going into executive session at the end of this meeting, and we will be adjourning from executive session, we will not be returning. Okay, now hit it, Marissa, thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to briefly acknowledge correspondence, emails to the full committee. We heard from Carrie and Chan Damon and Candace Towser, who reiterated their messages in public speak today, so I'll move on from those two. Also, I'd like to acknowledge correspondence from Gabe and Veronica Raposa, parents of two children encouraging winter sports, including basketball, following protocols in line with the successful volleyball season. From Susan Redmond, parent of two children at EHS, expressing support for winter sports as essential to children's physical and mental health. Laura and Fred Machia, writing with disappointment about the decision to not bring first graders in for in-person learning, with concerns that the district does not want children back in school and requesting better ways to teach remotely. From Sarah Amaroso, a parent of three school-aged children, writing with appreciation for the cessation of in-person instruction in the face of COVID. From Jessica Lucia, asking why East Hampton is in remote learning when surrounding communities, private schools, and daycares are offering in-person services. And from Courtney Ross, a senior at EHS, asking for winter sports, pointing out that many EHS students are having to risk their health working frontline jobs, such as at grocery stores, while not having the opportunity to advance in athletics. Thank you for the correspondence.
Thank you.
Marissa, I just wanted to add, there was also a letter from Shannon Dodrell, also requesting winter sports.
Oh, I'm so sorry that I missed that one, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you. All right, now for Dr. Leclerc and the superintendent update.
Thank you. I think the first item on my section of the agenda is related to the mayor's message around closing the public buildings that she sent out and put a press release out last week. I think that we had that on the agenda in case she wanted to speak this evening about it, but since she's not here, I did send a message out to all the families in the school district, letting them know that that does not impact us returning to school. That, you know, if we can have students and staff in the buildings and keep the public away, we are still complying with the mayor's proclamation. So I'll just, I'll move on from that, because I think that we're all set. We're going to move on to winter sports. And as Laurie mentioned, the COVID response team met about a week and a half ago to review winter sports. I've also met with the athletic director and Mr. Evans, and they're here this evening. And they're going to answer any questions. Mr. Evans has a letter that I'm going to ask him to read. And I would just like to read the letter that the COVID response committee wrote to the school committee. Because for those of you that are new here and don't know, COVID response committee is an advisory group to both myself and the school committee in helping us make informed decisions that are steeped in evidence and data. So with that being said, and I should say that, I will announce who's on the committee when I read the end of the message. Dear school committee members, the COVID response advisory team met on November 30th to review the MIAA statement on winter sports and sports-specific modifications and to make a recommendation to the school committee about our district's participation in winter sports. To inform our decision, we reviewed the following documents. The recently released MIAA Mass Interscholastic Athletic Association Statement on Winter Sports and the Workplace Safety and Reopening Standards for Businesses and Other Entities Providing Youth and Adult Amateur Sports Activities, which is Phase 3, Step 1, and can be found on the, I believe it's the mass.gov site, its safety standards. And that ranks youth sports into low, moderate, or high-risk categories. At this time, the COVID Advisory Response Team is recommending that the East Hampton Public Schools not participate in winter sports. We do not recommend that the district allow participation in any sports categorized by MIAA as moderate or high-risk. Our decision is made after a careful review and discussion of not only the information above, but also an examination of local and regional increases in COVID-19 cases, the fact that we are in a fully remote learning model at this time, and our concern over the risk level of winter sports, both moderate and high. The physicality and the location of winter sports presents further concerns expressed by this group. We do, however, recommend that teams find ways to connect and participate safely. For example, holding practices outside, conducting conditioning drills, and engaging in team-building activities can all be done in a safe, physically distant manner. In addition to a careful review of these documents, the COVID response team expressed concern over students' mental and physical well-being over the past several months. We understand and value that for many young people, sports provide a much-needed outlet, and we do not dismiss its importance in their lives. Addressing the mental and physical well-being is very important for all our students in order to assist them with engagement and learning, and we are committed to working on this priority. To that end, we recommend that the administration take an active role in providing opportunities for students to be more physically active in safe ways. Our recommendation is that the priority remains on creating a safe environment in order to return all students to in-person learning as quickly as possible. If the option to delay the season is feasible, we are able and willing to continue to monitor and review metrics and advise the school committee again at a future date. Sincerely, the COVID Response Advisory Team members. Is signed by myself as the superintendent, Sarah Mochek, Director of Special Education, Brooke Foss, who is a district RN, Lindsay Broussard, another district RN, Meredith Belice, White Brook Middle School principal, Laurie Garcia, school committee member, Nellie Taylor, who is a EHS teacher and the EEA president, Dr. Megan Harvey, epidemiologist and community member, Dr. Christian Deschain, pediatrician and our school physician, and Brianna Exstar, our City of East Hampton Health Agent. So I think Mr. Evans wanted to read a letter that he has prepared for the committee, and then we can open it up for the committee to ask questions or make comments. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc, and thank you, committee members, for allowing me the opportunity to read this letter. Hopefully you received it and have it at your disposal. But I'll read it in its entirety. Members of the East Hampton School Committee, this evening, you will be considering whether to allow competitive athletics to take place for the winter season. As you know, the MIAA, in conjunction with DESI, have put forth guidance that would allow certain communities to allow certain sports to compete in the coming season based on the health metrics within that community. For East Hampton High School, the sports that are under consideration are boys' and girls' basketball, hockey, and swim. As the COVID response team has indicated, basketball and hockey are considered high-risk sports for COVID transmission, and swim is considered moderate risk. With due respect to the response team's recommendations, the school administration would like to recommend that the committee consider the following options for winter sports. Number one, if we are able to use an area pool to allow the swim team to compete this season. As mentioned, swim has been identified as a moderate-risk sport, and meets will be held virtually. We could also consider not allowing co-op swimmers from Hampshire Regional High School to participate, thus further reducing the risk of exposure. Number two, in addition to the response team's recommendation to allow outdoor workouts for all teams, we would further request that all teams be allowed to practice in the gymnasium three days a week using the same protocols successfully used by the volleyball team this past fall. We would limit these workouts to East Hampton High School students only, with no other co-op members. And as a reminder, the volleyball team used the following protocols throughout their competitive season with no instances of transmission of COVID-19. Those included daily screening checks for all players and coaches, one-way entry through the outside door, assigned season-long areas in the bleachers for each student that are socially distanced, outside doors remained open, and ceiling fans remained on for the duration of practice time. Masks were worn while in the gym, and mask breaks were taken outside. One person was allowed in the bathroom at a time, and no additional guests in the gym were allowed during practices. This request comes as we are beginning to have an understanding of the broader impact that remote learning has had on our students. As you are aware, failure rates for EHS in the first quarter of 2020 are higher than they were in 2019. In a student survey conducted last Friday, 29%, I think that's updated to 32% of the respondents identified not being able to play sports as one of the more challenging aspects of remote learning. This despite the fact that we actually had soccer, cross-country, and volleyball, and golf during the football, during the fall season. In addition meanwhile, excuse me, in addition, 63% of the students identified not being able to be with their peers as a challenging aspect of remote learning. While we can understand the committee's decision to remain in a fully remote model, we believe we should do all that we can to provide students with the well-documented academic, physical, and social-emotional benefits that participation in sports can provide. We thank you for consideration of this matter and for your diligence in guiding our school through these extraordinary times. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have Mr. Miller here tonight, and we have Mr. Evans. I don't know if anyone on the committee has questions or comments. I believe it is for a vote to this committee, because we are in full remote. If we were not in full remote, I don't think you would have the vote, but because we're in remote, you have the vote.
Does anybody have questions?
I have one comment that I had not realized until we met in the COVID response team about this 10 days ago. It was enlightening to learn that of the 24 members of the MIAA that make these decisions, there is only one physician. there is only one physician on that committee. The rest are principals, athletic directors, and superintendents. So I do not believe their decision comes from any science-based evidence.
Sheilin?
I just wanted to mention, Bill, I didn't get anything from you today in regards...
Yeah, I don't know either.
I think Sue Colby was sending that out. Was she?
That's who I sent it to on your instruction.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to email that while we're sitting here.
That'd be great. The other question I wanted to ask, sorry, Maren. You had mentioned that you were doing a survey or sending out a participation request. How did the numbers come through with that?
Brian, can tell us how many students have registered for winter sports?
Right, so currently, we had 26 boys register for basketball, 23 girls. I believe we had 12 for hockey and eight for swim.
Okay. Maren?
Can you just clarify, Mr. Evans, a little bit more? You were talking about virtual meets for the swimming. Can you just explain how that's, like, what would that entail? How that is actually a meet versus just sort of swimming? If you could explain a little bit more about that, it'd be helpful, please.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Brian on that as well.
So in the fall, the eastern part of the state had fall swimming, and they ran it through virtual meets, which means you swim in your own pool. Each pool has officials there. Your times are recorded, and then those two, the times are compared afterwards. So there is no head-to-head competition in the pool. It's just basically swimming for time and comparing those scores.
Maren?
And so then, follow-up to that, just can you explain a little bit more? Unfortunately, I'm not knowledgeable about our swimming team. If you could just explain a little bit more about where we would be swimming? And then also just give us a sense, I mean, we talked about, for instance, girls' volleyball and the use of the gym. It was team versus team with, you know, just coaches, nobody else in the area. So what would be in terms of other people at any kind of swimming pool area? And just to give us a full picture of what that would look like?
Sure. Traditionally, we swim our meets at Williston. That is not an option. They have denied us access to their facilities. In the past few years, we've been practicing at Holyoke High School, which also does not seem to be an option right now. So I've been calling all the area pools, everything from health tracts, the YMCA's, the colleges. The best lead I have right now, I would say, is Westfield State. I've been talking with their athletic director, and he is looking into the feasibility of us using their facilities. If not that, then I'm still in that process of trying to locate a pool. But I'm pretty hopeful that Westfield State will come through for us. I'm sorry, the second part of the question.
Yeah, so the second part would be like, what? I mean, obviously, when it's in our gym, we're able to very much control who's coming in and who's, what kind of opportunities for people interacting and possibly transmitting COVID. So what would be, I mean, what kind of constraints would we be able to have on Westfield State? What kind of numbers would likely be around our athletes? And obviously, officials, things like that would be helpful, I understand.
Yeah, so we would be renting the facility. So the facility would be ours. There wouldn't be other people in the pool area. So, and there are no, we're not using locker rooms. So you come dressed to the pool. So we would come directly in. I'm not 100% sure of what the entrance exit is at Westfield currently. But it's going to be a matter of coming in, walking directly to the pool. There would only be our two coaches, our dive coach and our swim coach, as well as the athletes. On a day of a meet, there would then be two additional officials in the pool area. All the athletes would need to be masked at all times unless they're in the water. So the protocol for that is you go to the starting block with your mask on. You take your mask off. You put it into a Ziploc bag. That bag was then brought to the other end of the pool. When you swim your race, when you are finished, you would swim to the opposite end of the pool to exit, where your mask and towel would be waiting for you. So they would be masked basically at all times. There's been talk about using all, you know, every other lane instead of having them swim in each lane, even though they're fairly distanced. But that's another safety precaution that they're looking at. You're not meant to be, I don't know how they're going to guide, but you're not allowed to, I don't know if you've ever been to a swim meet, but they like to stand on the edge of the pool and scream. That's no longer permitted. They have to be socially distanced and back away from the pool. And no chairing, all the diving board, the handrails, everything needs to be wiped down after every practice, every use. So those are some of the safety precautions that they've put in place.
Sorry, and then just, I'm just trying to get the full picture of this, too. So then, in terms of on it, swimming, I assume it'd be really difficult to have those meets happening all at the exact time at, you know, half a dozen different swim pools around this area. So I would assume it'd be sort of asynchronous, kind of swimming meets all on the same day or something like that, and they'd be comparing to see who won or anything like that? Just can you explain that piece, too, please?
They have a 24-hour window to compete. So, because officials could also be an issue, requiring four now instead of the normal three for a meet. So two at each pool. So, yeah, they have that 24-hour window to compete in.
One of the features of swim is often you're, who you're really competing against is the clock. And for recruitment purposes, for athletes who might be able to compete at a next level, being able to post, you know, better times in an official way is really important, as with track and field and cross-country and any other sport. So, you know, our students who are hopeful of moving on would really benefit from the opportunity to have another season to be able to, even if they're not, you know, swinging next to a competitor, to be able to post, you know, favorable times and have that in their recruitment sort of package.
Okay. And I'm trying to get my head wrapped around what you're proposing for the use of the gym with the basketball practices.
So those basketball and hockey and swim, if we don't have, if we're not allowed to have a competitive season. So the idea, again, would be that they would not be using the facility for games, but for just their own workouts and practices. And again, following the same protocols that the volleyball team used through the fall. And, you know, again, it's an opportunity. The COVID Response Team recommended outdoor workouts, which I think is a great idea. But they can only get you so far in basketball. Once the ball gets really cold, it's really difficult to do anything basketball-related. So, and, you know, once the snow flies, that becomes problematic as well. Plus, all the outdoor baskets have been taken down. So the opportunity to be able to practice their sport in a setting that is reasonable for that sport. And if we're doing that for them, then the hockey team, I'm sure, would benefit from conditioning and being able to, you know, use the gymnasium for hockey-related kind of activities. I'm not as much a hockey guy, but...
Laurie?
I would like to clarify, in the COVID Response Team, we were not insinuating that basketball players would be playing basketball outside. We were trying to brainstorm ways that students could find outlets, could socialize, and could exercise. But that didn't mean that we thought they'd be playing basketball in snow-covered courts outside. And we also talked about having school-wide competitions where students could log different athletic activities. I had asked Dr. Leclerc to speak to the administrators. I'm not sure if you heard about that, Mr. Evans, because that could be a way to motivate students to be getting outside, whether it be taking a three-mile run, and then they could log that, how many sit-ups they could be doing. I know that it's not playing the games that they love to do, but it's an impetus to get out from behind their screens and get some activity.
Yes, thank you for raising that. Dr. Leclerc did raise that with us. And I think that, you know, through our PE classes, that is much of what's happening in our PE classes, is students are logging individual workouts. And I think that our other competitive teams were hoping that students would do that kind of thing. But I think you hit it well, that it's not the same as playing the sport that you love. And, you know, getting out and taking a jog is something that, you know, some of us enjoy at one level, but it's not, it doesn't, I don't think it satisfies the same kinds of goals that playing in a game do. So I think it's a nice supplement, and I think we should encourage that. I don't think it is an adequate substitute for sports.
So, okay, I have one quick question. You, I'm trying to understand, we're not just talking about doing layups and three-point shots. We're actually talking about scrimmaging with each other, practicing with each other, where someone goes up for a shot, somebody else is right in their face, blocking that shot. Is that correct? Is that the kind of practicing that you're considering?
That could be a portion of it. I mean, a lot of it would be working on individual skills and whatnot. So I think we would probably, or we would limit it to 12 in the gym. So that would be tuttle basket, working on individual drills, offensive moves, things like that. It could eventually incorporate things like three-on-three and whatnot, following all the protocols. So everyone would be masked at all times or required to wear a mask. I mean, I have a whole list of the sort of guidelines that we would need to follow. We would follow everything that the MIAA is requiring for, you know, interscholastic sports. But by just ourselves, we would obviously eliminate any sort of contact with other people from other communities. We would have, it would be a much more controlled setting. We would eliminate bus rides and things like that. So we just feel that, you know, yes, there is a risk. We always, we know that there is a risk. But we're able to sort of mitigate those risks through the different protocols and guidelines which we'd be following.
But you are talking about physical contact between kids, because, correct? They're both masked, but they're going to be exhaling forcefully as they knock into each other. And, you know, where there's going to be physical contact quite significant.
That's on your definition of quite significant, but...
Well, my daughter played basketball all the way through college. So I know what it's like when you go up for a layup and somebody else has to block. You're going to hit each other. That's how you get a foul. So you're right into each other. So that's basically what I'm talking about in terms of significant. So, Marissa and Maren? And Laurie, sorry.
It's been very helpful to sort of hear exactly what these various sports would look like. And I just wanted to put it to the committee that given there seems to be a lot of variation, if we could vote on each of these sports independently, when it's time to do that.
Okay, good point. Maren?
And so my question is just to actually look back over the fall season and just to give a little bit of feedback on that. Obviously, we did approve fall sports, set forward some recommendations and protocol requirements. Was there, at least as far as I understand, and I could have missed something, but as far as I'm understanding, the season for all the different sports did turn out well, and games were able to be played. There was no known causes of COVID, either to our players or to any of our other competitors. And so I just, could you just sort of recap the fall season in terms of what was able to be, happen within the protocols that were asked of you all?
Yeah, I mean, we completed the entire season. Now, initially, we were scheduled to have 10 games, maybe, but because other districts might have gone into the red, any team that was in the red, we did not play them. Although the other towns were playing teams in the red, but we had chosen not to, obviously. So the schedule did get pared down. I think for girls' soccer, we had eight games. For volleyball, about the same. So it did get shortened due to other factors. But you're right, we had no known instances of COVID within our program. We did have people, a couple occasions where people were in close contact or family members had COVID. And then we had to shut down for a couple days until they got tested and tested negative. And so we followed that protocol so that we were able to get everyone back on the court or field. So, correct, there were no cases of COVID as a result of fall sports.
Laurie?
I applaud you for that. And I'm very appreciative that nothing happened. And I did vote in favor of fall sports. But I'd like to remind everyone, I'm sure you don't need the reminder, that the community transmission rate is now more than double what it was when we voted in favor of fall sports. And by the very nature of the sport, that volleyball is not as dangerous as even the MIAA states. So basketball is a very dangerous sport, no matter how you play it.
And I would reiterate, we're not requesting the, that the high-risk sports be approved for competitive, simply for our own teams to be able to practice with each other inside.
Dr. Leclerc?
And I just wanted to add another clarifying factor before you take a vote. Swimming and hockey are both co-op teams. And we have no desire to operate those in a co-op capacity this winter. So if you are voting to have hockey practices, it would only be with the East Hampton members of the team. It would not be with North Hampton students. So I just wanted to clarify that in case you had that question.
Could you offer us a parallel discussion about hockey, where that takes place? How it's been affected? I know there was a lot of rink closures earlier this year. What are the protocols there?
Yeah, so obviously, the rink is another issue because we normally would practice at Williston. So we were able to secure practice time at Holyoke, at the Holyoke Rink, and also at the Greenfield Rink. And then all games would take place at Olympia Sports Arena in West Springfield. And because we wouldn't be co-op-ing, it would just be, obviously, our athletes competing in that sport.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand. So basketball, you're not talking about competing, but you're actually asking to compete in...
I was just explaining to her how hockey would look, but we're not asking to actually compete in hockey. The hockey that we're proposing would be the same thing. It would basically be a floor hockey in the gym where they can work, train, they can do fitness, they can do circuit training, things like that, as well as work on stick handling, shooting, and other type of drills and skills in the gymnasium. So, yes, we're not asking to have a hockey season right now. We're looking for the same as basketball.
Yeah, and not looking to practice in an arena with, you know...
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for what...
So how would you be practicing in a gym for hockey?
For hockey, they would be just with their sticks.
Just the sticks and a ball, okay.
Yeah, working on skills.
And what would your numbers look like? And what would your numbers look like at any given time?
Twelve right now have signed up for hockey. So 12, I'm thinking 12 is what we would cap the gym space at.
But are you leaving it open that those numbers could grow if we approved this?
I think if the numbers continue, the numbers could grow, but we could offer more sessions to keep it at the 12.
Could you remind us as well what the sort of typical length of the season would be? Just sort of, you know, obviously, I believe December 14th was listed as a beginning, but how, how far it would normally extend?
Yeah, so the MIA recommended the 14th as a start date. The PVIAC, which is the Pioneer Valley Inter-Scholastic Conference, has decided to push it back to January 4th would be the start date, and it would run through February 21st.
And we would, for the practice sessions, we would, we would follow those same dates.
And we're looking to three days a week rather than the normal six days a week.
Three days in the gym and if, and, and if they wanted to do workouts outside on the off days, we would allow that as well.
And when it comes to, comes to like sharing the gym between the different teams, you know, obviously, we talk about three days. There's probably got to be some overlap to that. So correct me if I'm wrong, and then I imagine we have protocols in between to sanitize and keep things safe.
Right, so the sessions would start at three o'clock and they would run for about an hour and a half with a 15-minute gap in between the two where we would clear the gym out. I spoke with the custodians today. Any areas where they may have been, we can use the disinfecting fogger. So we would do that. Each, the balls obviously would need to be wiped down, just like they were in volleyball between each session. There's, so basic, you can, in those five days, you can have three, three sessions a day and accommodate all the, the teams that would need to be in the gym.
This might not be appropriate for me to speak up, but I'm wondering if maybe as a pediatric healthcare person, can I offer some information about face masks?
Yeah.
Face masks?
We really can't because if we, we can't take any comments from public. I'm so sorry.
Information, thanks.
Sorry.
Lori? I don't know if we're at this part of the discussion yet, but I'm just wondering if we could make it mandatory, if we were to consider such things, make it mandatory that there be at least once a week testing for anybody that was going to participate. Since there is more testing available now, including the site they just opened in Amherst, which is for symptom-free people over 10, I believe, as well as the Holyoke site that will have lines that aren't as long since Amherst opened.
I, I, I think that's an, a laudable suggestion. Of course, the, the question about equity is always one, you know, having testing available in Holyoke and in Amherst does require the availability of transportation and time. We, and I don't know that we can ensure that every family member, that every family has that opportunity.
Well, I'm thinking also about trying to get more students back in school. And because of the nature of working out and playing either basketball or hockey is very risky for transmission. And the more cases we have, the less likelihood there will be to have students back in the classroom, where it's more important to have them right now than playing sports. So as a good suggestion to see to help prevent spread would be to have testing.
Agreed.
Shannon?
I just wanted to ask, Bill, are we following like the procedures as far as grades and being able to participate in sports and things like that?
Yes, you'd have to still be academically eligible.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So just to clarify the numbers, so what, just to clarify what we're talking about too, because at least that last statement about the season was really helpful for me. We're talking about seven weeks between January and February with three practice sessions a week is what we're saying. So we're talking about 21 days of practice sessions over that season. Is that roughly correct?
I thought you said three a day, not three a week.
Three a day per team. So it really is, if you're on one of those teams, you're practicing three times a week. It's roughly seven weeks. So we're roughly talking about 21 practice sessions in that January, February season.
Per sport.
Per sport, per team.
Per team, yes.
Per team.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? I can tell you that I see the swimming piece as a much less risky piece. The idea that you're swimming against a clock and not competing against another team, at least I find very encouraging. I will tell you, I am still, I, there's a difference between doing plays where there's not contact and scrimmaging against each other. There is a difference between foul shots and conditioning and dribbling than, you know, coming up against each other. So my comfort level on one area where we're talking foul shots, three-pointers, layups, and you're doing those drills with no contact is very different from my concern about having kids, even with a mask, really having significant contact with each other. So you're inside?
If it's a concern, I mean, there are certainly things that we can do. I mean, we train for hours daily and we work on skills and things that don't require contact. If that's the deal breaker, the end-all, to not allow the kids to get out and have any sort of social interaction, then we can tailor it to the point where there is no.
It's not that they can't, it's not that they can't have social interaction because if I'm having people watch me try to do three-pointers or a foul shot, I certainly can be talking to my teammates.
Right, I'm saying that is the opportunity. I'm saying if you flat-out say no to everything, then they lose that opportunity. So we could still provide them with that opportunity by tailoring the, the drills and, and activities to just straight skill without the content.
And again, I agree with Marissa's request that we're going to take these sport by sport. But just to jump back to hockey, I assume that based on it being in the gym, there really, the, the, there is no contact that's really going to be happening through the hockey side of practices. Is that a fair assessment?
As far, you know, checking and things like that, no, there would, there wouldn't be any checking. So again, they could, we could tailor that to skill development.
So that's a guarantee that there wouldn't be any checking?
Well, if we set a guideline and we set rules, then we would expect that they would be followed, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be the expectation is that there, there wouldn't be any. Can, can I, you know, guarantee 100% that two kids don't, you know, bump into each other? No, but the expectation is that they are working on skills, drills, socially distanced in their own, own area. Yeah.
Maren?
Look, Chair, if it's okay to you, could, if we think it's ready, I could start to make some motions to see while they, each sport goes through and, and what we might decide as a group?
Is everybody ready or we're all ready? Okay. Lori?
How will we add in? As, as we did bef, Jonathan first, you said? I'm sorry, did you say?
No, both of you, the two of you before we do this.
Oh, okay. I just want to add in the stipulation that there be weekly testing. And I, I really don't like being told about equity when a lot of these sports aren't equitable to begin with, knowing about how much they cost and also driving far places to go practice and to be able to go over the mountain and get a test to help us get students in school quicker is something that I have my eye on. So before I even entertain my personal vote, I'd like to know that this would be set, that they need to get tested. We had them tested once before they started in the fall, but a weekly test.
So my tendency, just before we vote, is to agree with Lori. I don't see any reason why someone could not get a test. Holyoke HCC is doing them. I know people who go twice a week to get it done. And you're talking about inside, when, when you were looking at sports the last time, in volleyball, you're pretty spread out and you don't check each other. You're not scrimmaging against your teammates. So there's, there's a distance between you. The doors were open. I'm concerned. You know, I'm concerned with doors closed and an hour and a half practice, and I definitely would not want contact. I don't want these kids to be scrimmaging with each other. But I also would feel better and feel a little differently if I knew they were getting tested. It's not a guarantee. But I do think we need to get these kids tested. The numbers are growing in East Hampton significantly. Maren?
Jonathan wanted to speak first too, so please go ahead.
Well, in response to all of that, I would tend to agree as we try to take the stance of an abundance of caution. And I certainly agree with Lori's position that our top priority is getting kids into the school and we need to act as a larger community in a way that ultimately leads us towards that ultimate end goal. I'd also weigh in, in favor of keeping, especially for these high-risk sports, distance between the kids. I don't particularly see, you know, when we were bringing students into the school, there was, you know, a requirement of at least three feet separation, and we went the extra step of requiring six feet of separation. I don't see this as a reason or an opportunity to step back from that. And I think maintaining six feet of separation should be sort of a stance that we have if we're going to entertain this possibility. So I would feel a lot more comfortable considering focusing on the skill-based work that has been proposed, understanding that, you know, it's not the same as going up against a competitor, but at least, you know, they'll be in a position to have stronger skills when that opportunity arises again.
I do see them as two pieces. One is conditioning without contact with each other and the other one is where I have my much, much greater concern.
And that's like, you, you, as a committee, you can decide and, and say that it has to be the skill-based and that's fine with us. And you can clear it with 12 people in the gym. You can socially distance and keep that.
Yes, you can.
Six, you know, six-foot spacing for, for the most part, obviously. And any, as far as the doors and whatnot, our, our plan was to, to have the door open. I know it's going to be cold, but, you know, I don't think they're going to complain about being cold if they have an opportunity to play. So the, the fans will be on, the door will be open, the same exact protocols we use for volleyball.
So if I could just, I, it, clearly, there's a division in, in view on testing within this group. I, I think that, you know, I've been tested several times at Holyoke Community College. I've sat for three hours in my car at worst one time. The other time was one hour. The other two times were one hour each. I, I just, the, adding that expectation on to family members, parents to be able to drive their students, to be able to be tested on a weekly basis does seem quite a bit as a burden to me, besides the equity issues of, of even having transportation and assuming that they can get there, that their parents have time between jobs to be able to get them there, between being able to do that with being able to participate in remote learning. I, I do feel like that is a unequitable, inequitable burden to require that of these students. I think that if we're talking about taking a step back to non, no, what's getting missing the word, basically, non-touch, no-touch basketball, no-touch hockey, prac, skill practices, that, those things would not then be listed in any kind of way as a high-contact or high-concern sport. And so at least from my perspective, requiring them to have weekly testing is an undue burden on the parents and on the athletes.
And are you not suggesting that they begin with a clear COVID test?
Well, we, we put forward our, I'm, I'm not saying exactly yet, but I'm saying in terms of what we did in the fall is we recommended that they be tested, but it was not a requirement that they be tested at that time.
It, it was a requirement.
It was a requirement.
And then they did.
Required at the start of the season.
And then there was, and then there was a daily screener that they had to.
And then daily screening, correct.
Shannon?
Um, from an equity standpoint, absolutely. Lori, you had mentioned the cost is expensive, et cetera. There are students who have a waiver, just so you know. And yes, it is an equity issue to have to do this on a weekly basis, especially when we're not bringing in other towns. We're, we're suggesting at this point possibly contactless practices. I, I don't, I don't think that we need a weekly test. I think, I think that's very unfair.
It's un, it's unfortunate that it is a burden now because of the high transmission and sitting with an epidemiologist weekly and listening to the facts about sweaty masks, even running in a gym, even without contact, because I'm so versed in the science behind it and knowing that a test can help prevent more spread and hopefully get our students back in. I'm sorry if it's a burden. I'm sorry if there are lines and there are lines because there is such significant transmission now and so many people are sick. And it would be my advice to have people just work out, work out together outside in the open air and not have them in, and then they wouldn't have to go get tested.
So I wonder if it's possible to move forward with a vote, with a motion that put these forward? And if, if a motion doesn't pass without testing, then we can see if it would pass with testing.
Well, something I just, I haven't. I, I just want to say one thing before we do a motion. And maybe I'm going to be the one everybody's mad at, but come Thanksgiving, a lot of families did not do what they needed to do. The numbers are rising. I, it's not just East Hampton, it's every single city. Families did not, not visit. They did not, not share with relatives. And the idea of not testing these kids, and yet we're going to put them in a, in a room huffing and puffing as they exercise, I think is a, is a big issue. My biggest priority is getting our kids back to school. I do not want to do anything that is going to make those numbers get higher. And then come January, we have a target to get all these kids. And then come January, we have a target to get all these kids coming back into school. And um I, I, my interest is really to make sure that we get those kids in, that we keep those numbers down. And I would love to say that everybody is gonna behave, but the reality is we know across the nation, we know in the city, we know in this state, we know in Hampshire County, people made choices to do things and they're coming back and they're sick. And they're testing positive. And so the idea of not testing these kids is really concerning to me. I don't want, um, I'm really hoping we don't make a decision that closes down our January entrance into in-person academics because to me that is crucial. Come spring, I believe that we can get these kids outside playing, hopefully if we can get our numbers down. But I'm really concerned. Um, and my focus is really getting those kids back to school. So I'll be quiet. Marissa?
I would say that given the January 4th start date and we've talked about kind of um exposure during the holidays, perhaps the um test to begin the season would make sense and be in alignment with what we had done in the fall.
Jonathan?
If I may, just um off to that point, I seem to recall from our last meeting, um, it was suggested by the epidemiologist that we would need something in the realm of three weeks to see. Although that was, you know, I guess in seeing the numbers play out. So I guess maybe that's not the same thing.
Well, we did shift our returns.
Right, I was just, I was just thinking from a testing standpoint, you know, at what point it would be relevant. And I suppose if it happened, you know, right before that January 4th, that anyone who was exposed over the holidays would in fact, you know, probably test positive at that point. I'm sorry, I was just kind of talking that out in my head.
Uh, Dr. Leclerc?
I was just going to mention that we also at our COVID response team meeting discussed a kind of quasi-campaign, if you will, of getting the messaging out to families, reminding them that if they, if their family makes a decision to socialize over the holiday um break, then they should really not be engaged in anything school-related for that period of time afterwards, that, that two to three weeks, whatever it is, on the last day that they, they socialize. So we would do a message out. Uh, the nursing department was developing a message to remind families that that would be the ownership that they would take on if they were going to be socializing. So, you know, obviously, we're not following people around. It is, it is the honor system, but we're hoping that people will do the right things, particularly if their student is going to be engaging with other students in an athletic situation.
Lori, Shannon?
Because Jonathan brought up the epidemiologist, Megan Harvey, who is on our COVID response team. It is her suggestion that if students were to be inside where they would be sweating and practicing sports, that they be tested twice a week.
And Miles, that?
Yes, go ahead, Shannon. I'm so sorry.
Um, no, I was, so um, Mr. Miller, when, when did you say the, the first practice would be held? I mean, if, if this went forward?
So the start date for the PVIAC, so for all of Western Mass, the, the winter sports would be starting on January 4th. Obviously, we're not, we're not, you know, required to go by those because we wouldn't be competing in the PVIAC. So if we wanted to start on January 10th, we could start on January 10th.
Okay, so this has nothing, this isn't gonna impact our open date?
Only swim if we approach swim because they would be competing, whereas the other schools, other would just be practicing. So we wouldn't be a part of, of the, the PVIAC season.
So we're only competing virtually though, correct?
For pool, yeah, for swim.
Okay.
Yes.
That is very important information.
It is.
Thank you.
Can I just say what about the, the testing also? If we're gonna do that initial test, I think you need to set that, the, the dates because what happened in the fall is people were getting tested in August, right after the meeting. And then we didn't compete until October.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think with the holidays, you, you would wanna set some sort of um timeframe for them to be tested in.
And I, I also see a big difference between um the swimming, starting January 4th. And one of the reasons why we pushed back school and the kids coming back into the building a couple of weeks is because, again, I, I wish it was not so, but not everybody is going to behave. And the fear is that, um, and it's a realistic fear that those numbers are going to, um, they're gonna increase. So starting on January 4th isn't necessarily a good time to start. Whereas another week or two later, you would know whether or not you're okay. You just come back from Christmas vacation, you're initially going to test negative. And then a day later, you could come back and, and be positive. Lori?
All of these being brought up, especially by Mr. Miller, is exactly why students, if they're going to be participating in sports, should be tested weekly because you can't just set a random date, then have them get exposed. If they are tested once a week, the epidemiologist says 90% of the cases can be caught. Whereas twice a week would be 100%. So, and also you're not just talking about Christmas because that's just one of the holidays in the long break. We have to think about right up until New Year's and then you don't see the high transmission rate until three weeks after that, from an epidemiological point of view.
Marian?
So um I, I would speculate that we all know what our own personal vote is already. And I feel like we've talked this thing around quite a bit. Um, I, I, and I know we still have plenty more to go this evening. Is it possible for us to move forward with making votes on these different cases now? And then the other question I have, just for clarity's sake, since there's only six of us here tonight, is it majority, meaning a 4-2 vote is required to pass?
Yes. So we would have to come back and do it another time. We do have another meeting that we were considering on the 22nd.
Correct.
Before you make the motion, I, I agree with you. I, I think that we can move forward. Um, I'm just curious if we can agree on the need for the test prior to the season starting.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
If I could proceed then, what I would do is make a motion that we allow swimming to start on January 4th for asynchronous uh practice and competition. I would request or require that testing of all those athletes happen after January 1st and before the first day of practice. So it is after the holiday season. Um, and that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Lori, you're unmuted, okay.
Is it too late for conversation where a date was just?
No, you can, no, you can discuss just right up until we vote.
As far as COVID load goes for testing, it really has to be at least five days after exposure to have there be true validity to the test. So just saying, you know, the day after the first really wouldn't matter. So.
Well, that's after, that is after Hanukkah, that's after Christmas.
Not, I'm, I'm talking about Hanukkah's Thursday, so we're not talking about Hanukkah. But New Year's is the first, so five days after would be the sixth.
If, yes. So I'm saying five days to start after Christmas or Hanukkah holidays. And, but it would not be after the New Year's Eve celebration of people who are getting together for New Year's Eve, correct? That's what I'm putting a motion in.
Let's keep in mind, there's only eight students we're talking about right now.
I'd also just point out, so I believe you said between the first and the fourth, which is essentially the weekend.
Right.
And I do wonder about the challenge.
People aren't coming back until the end of their weekend. If you have, if you have a whole, you know, 11 days off, people will come back towards the end.
I mean, or are, are, do tests, and forgive my ignorance, but are the tests continuing to be like available? If we said you, you have to get tested on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, is that feasible is I guess my point.
No, they're not. So what that would mean is that, and I, I'm gonna assume that they're not gonna be open. At least the Holyoke Community College won't be open on Friday the first. So what it would basically mean is for those, depending on when the first practice was gonna be for the swim team, it would, they would have to go get it on Monday the fourth or whatever day that week would be the first day of practice.
Could I offer a suggestion? I know I'm not part of the committee. But um the suggestion would be that um a student can't start participating until they've demonstrated a negative test after January 4th.
Yes, basically, that's what I'm saying, that's the.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to get.
And remember, it takes sometimes two to three days, sorry, two to three days minimum sometimes to get the results back.
Yeah, so that the season would, would, uh, the, the participants would not be able to start to practice until they got their results back to prove that they had a negative result. And so it, practice couldn't start on the fourth. At best, it could probably start on the sixth or something like that. And so the coach and the participants would need to factor in how that first week would play out in January, the first press season.
If there's no more discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. So the idea is that swimming would go forward with a negative COVID test on or after the fourth before practice. And uh provided that the swimming is virtual.
Well, just to clarify, I mean, just in case someone is able to get a test some other way on Saturday or Sunday through their um direct physician or something like that, I was just saying after the first. So um, but I mean, we could move it later and.
Somebody else was saying after the fourth, so we really need to decide where we're going. And Sue, you wanted to say something?
I didn't catch a second, so I don't know if someone seconded it. I didn't hear it.
Yeah, Shannon did.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So I, my motion was that it was after the first and that that would probably mean in terms of at least the Holyoke Community College location, it would mean it would be wait until the fourth. But if for some reason a pair, a participant was able to get a test on the weekend, um, that that was still in my motion. We can have an amendment to that and change that, but that's what my motion was. I don't know if it's gonna make a difference between how people are gonna vote or not, so.
We ready to vote? Lori?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye, Shannon, I'm aye.
Jonathan?
This is for swimming, uh, Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Okay. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Marian?
Marian Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye, I do feel differently about swimming.
So I would like to then make a motion that we approve indoor practices, non-contact practices for hockey. And that this, again, would require a test, a no, a negative COVID test after the first um and prior to any start in practice or participation. Would need to be able to provide them with that negative test.
Any other discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, but do we want to um have any discussion?
Could I just insert the, aside from just saying non-contact, could we put in the requirement of six feet? Um, as like the in-school requirement that we've had up to this point?
Yeah. You can condition and you can practice while maintaining six feet from each other.
That's my request for the motion anyway.
Yeah. So we could amend that?
Well, only if the motion is amended by the person that made it, I suppose.
Correct.
And I, and I guess my question is, you know, we've had that rule for in-school up to this point. So if we say, if we say non-contact, is it implied that that is the case because that's already?
You can get really close to each other and still not be contact. You know, and one of the concerns was you were hoping that people wouldn't be checking each other. Well, if you're six feet apart and you're conditioning and practicing, you're not having contact. So that is very different.
Yeah, I would say that when we did volleyball, there was no requirements of six feet apart. So I, you know, I think we can say no contact, but um, I don't know. If there's other people that feel like that's a requirement to make, to clarify, they have to be six feet apart.
I would like the six feet apart. You're inside. Um, and it's, it, the numbers are growing. I would feel better with six feet. So I would love to see um Jonathan's amendment to that.
And we're not, so this is, this is not weekly testing, right? This, this vote is for not weekly testing?
Correct. My, my motion was for starting the season with a, the negative test after the first.
So can I just ask one last question? Why the burden that you can't get a weekly test? I understand the burden of getting twice a week, um, but where is the burden? If your motivation is to play a sport, um, and we have local testing, um, I'm just wondering where we are that we're saying that that's too much of a burden to actually go and get that test, even though you seriously want to be playing?
Personally, I think that, um, I mean, what you're asking for, you know, some of these students may have their own vehicles uh or be able to, I don't know, uh, wintertime, try to get up and over. I don't know, public transportation options would be available on a daily basis to get up there uh to Holyoke Community College. But it does seem like a burden between the, the parent to be able to be potentially working and having to get their student athlete to uh testing on a weekly basis for these seven weeks of practice. Um, that seems like a burden to me.
This pandemic is a burden to everybody.
Yeah.
People say.
Well, I, I would accept the amendment to say that all practice conditioning needs to keep six feet apart.
Yep, to second an amendment.
I mean, I'll second the amendment. Um, I suppose the one thing that we haven't brought up in all of this is the daily screeners that we also required. Um, and I suppose we shouldn't just take that under assumption either.
Sorry, I certainly was, yeah. Yeah, all this still continues the same requirements of daily uh protocols and review by coaches and parents and the athletes for daily screening. And all of the other protocols that were mentioned uh already in terms of space and airflow and use of restrooms, all of those things.
We have a lot of parents on this call and I, I, I guess all I can think of is that there are a lot of parents who want their kids to play. I honestly believe they would take their kid and have them take a um test once a week. We have numbers significantly going up. I'm trying to caution everybody as we go that we want to get these kids in school. Last, last school committee meeting was terrible. It was awful because we had so many families who were devastated. And we have a target goal of January to get them back in. And I just want, I really want everybody to think about that in terms of, uh, to me, it's not a burden to get a test. Marissa?
Moving things along, can we take this vote and then if it fails, take, someone might offer a second proposal that are using weekly testing?
Yeah.
So maybe just to reiterate the motion, is that helpful or? So just to reiterate, the motion is to approve um winter sports for hockey. Uh, the use of non-contact, six-feet-apart, required practice and conditioning in the gym. All of those regular uh previously required. All of those regular, previously required protocols of daily screening, airflow, bathroom usage, and having a negative COVID test after January 1st before the start of any single participant's participation in practice.
Okay. Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, no.
Shannon?
I.
Jonathan?
Sorry. I'm going to say Jonathan Schmidt, no.
Okay, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Okay, and Cindy, no.
If I can just make your comment about the weekly testing. So we're talking about bringing students back the same week that we let sports start. Are you going to make the rest of the students take a weekly test?
First of all, we're not talking about bringing kids back on the fourth. We changed our dates.
You've been talking about a target date of January 4th, have you not?
No, we've been talking, we moved it back because we had to, because we are so sure that our numbers are going to go up and we won't know where they are on the fourth. We, everybody knows this. We're not going to know what the true numbers are on the fourth. So yeah, we pushed everything back.
Special population?
I'll, I'll talk about that in a little while.
Yeah, I think special population is like the 14th or something.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm going to bring, I'm, I'm bringing something new to the committee tonight.
Okay.
I've just heard a target date of the fourth. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Again, just to sort of keep this going forward, we've got plenty more conversations tonight to be had. So I'll make a motion that we allow indoor winter sports for hockey with required six feet apart, no contact conditioned practice. It allows them to practice with all the previous requirements and requires them to have a weekly test, negative tests. I guess that would be something that it would, in order for that to happen with report backs in terms of actually getting the negative tests, it would, they would have to get a weekly test result and then it's a week from when they get the negative that would be allow them to practice for that following week, which would be three practices or what have you. Is that clear enough? Clear enough as mud? I don't know.
Can I just make an amendment to that and at least until school starts? Until we open school, there's no, I don't understand why we would have to send them out to have testing done every week if we're in school.
I agree. I, I think that once we, if our numbers are low enough that we can get kids back in, I do believe that, that then it becomes almost like a hybrid model. And if we're holding on to six feet and no contact, I do see that as different.
So then, just to clarify, this would all, that, the weekly testing would only be required until such time as we had a hybrid model, not remote, a remote plus, but it would be a hybrid model where students were, where all students were in part-time in our schools, correct?
I would second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. So there's hockey. Basketball.
So I'd like to make a motion that allows indoor winter sports practice for basketball that we require six feet apart, no contact, practice, conditioning, all of the regular other protocols of daily screening and a negative test after January 1st. Are we also going to stay that we have to have them have weekly testing, I guess is, I don't know.
My suggestion is that would be the shortcut, looking at how we voted the last time.
So we will require weekly testing of these athletes to be athletes during the season until they, such time as the school enters back into a hybrid model.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
So if I can just make one clarification on that, just so it'll be 100% clear to our athletic director and principal and all the athletes, what that is saying is that once you have a test and you get the results back, let's say for an example, you go in on January 4th and have a test, you get the result back on January 6th. That means that test is good for seven days and then you have to go back in again. So there is the possibility that even if you waited till the following Monday, the 11th, and then it took three days to get your result back that time, there may be a lapse where you would not be allowed to practice. So any, any negative test result gives you the ability to practice for seven days at a time. So.
Well, Maren, if a student gets tested on like a Friday and gets their results on Monday?
Yep, they're good.
Then there's, then they can practice till. Practice Monday to Sunday and then they have to have a negative back in by Monday of the following week in order to start practice. Otherwise, they would not be able to go to the conditioning practices that were offered to them. It's a lot of administrative management by the coaches, but hopefully that's something that would be possible.
Did you want to ask?
Guys, it's seven days from the test, not from the result, right? Is that?
No, I think we have to say because we can't control how long the result, takes to get the results, it's seven days from the, the result. So.
Right, because if you took a test and you didn't get the results for four days, you could be playing positive and then you get the results. So you get the results and your seven days goes.
Yeah, so it's seven days from the result time period. So if results are coming back in one day, then you could shorten how long, how often, you could be tighter up to when you get the next test. But otherwise, so for instance, if you have, if you have a negative and then it goes seven days and you get tested, but then it takes five days to get a result back, you're off practice for those five days while you're waiting for the result. It's not that you had another test, it's that you haven't had your results back. And so you have to wait till the results come in. So any, any negative test, that result lasts for seven days.
But also, just to reiterate that, so you can't get tested until essentially the fourth. The results come back, go back on Friday and get another test so that by Monday you have the results. You know what I'm saying? There's no limit to how many tests you have. So, you know, you have to wait till Monday, the fourth, go back on Friday, the ninth or whatever it is, 10th.
Laurie?
Weekly testing doesn't work that way to try to prevent the spread. What you're supposed to do, you get tested initially, get that result. That only captures that one day. You could really get infected the next day. But you, you can't run testing that way. So the way it's advised is you get a test weekly on the same day. You don't have to wait for the results because you're really only capturing that one day. But in order to make this safer and the way that schools are doing it, who have the luxury of having weekly testing, is you get tested weekly. You don't have to stop doing things, waiting for the results. But you set up the safety net by just going the same day each week. And students can be practicing as long as they're getting the test. The same day each week and getting results back negatively.
And, and I, hearing that, I wonder if that's something that the coaches could potentially work with their players around to sort of kind of work out what that schedule might look like for them as an individual? Just a thought.
It's, it's going to be pretty limited because they're going to be in school and then they're going to be practicing those three days. So there's really only two days when they could possibly get tested. So I think it'll kind of take care of itself. Sure.
And I just want to be clear that, because what Laurie just suggested is different from what Maren said, I think. And I think that what I'm hearing is that if, if a player, we'll just stick with a player, is on a weekly testing regimen, that they can continue to practice until such time as they get a negative result.
After the first negative result, because they can't start without that.
Correct. Once they get their first negative result, they need to, they can, they can start participating. They need to get tested weekly on a regular schedule. And then they can continue to participate, even if one of those tests takes four days to get a result back, or three days or two days, or whatever it is, until such time as they are, they have a negative result, they can continue to practice. Is that what I am to understand at this point?
Yes, that is how it is suggested by our epidemiologist and that is how schools do it. You can't wait for the results to come back. Even locally, results that were coming back within 24 hours were taking 48 hours, but kids were still in school. So as long as there is a weekly schedule that is adhered to, you're capturing. It is possible as best as you can.
Thank you all very, very much. We really appreciate it.
So then what just has to be proven is you have to give evidence that you've taken the test on a weekly basis, though.
So there's a receipt of some sort that they have to get to say, yep, you got tested.
You don't get a receipt, though, at the Holyoke Community College, so.
Picture.
Get a picture of yourself getting it tested. That'd be fun. But I think you get an email. If, once you get into the protocol, they do send an email that, that, that it's going to be sending one out to you. So you should be able to have that as an example.
One way or another, you should be able to prove that you got the test. And then we just have to implore parents and families to behave. We're close. And if we want a really nice 2021, we need to, we need to really do what we need to do to stay safe. Okay, we ready to move on? We have equity update?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans and Mr. Miller. And I am pleased to talk about something besides COVID for a little while. Another important topic in the district is our equity work, which continues even remotely. And so I have asked Julianne Levin to come tonight to give you all a little bit of an update on what the equity groups are doing and some of the work going on district-wide. And she has some friends with her, so I'm going to turn it over to Julianne Levin and she has promised to be brief, so.
Yes, I have promised to be brief. It's so good to see everyone. It's so good to see your faces. And I'm very excited to be here and to be talking about something that we have talked about with each other for years now. Although I just want to note the difference that every agenda item that you have addressed tonight has been about equity. And that's, that's a real change from when I started giving these equity updates. So it's really, I think, I know it's been really tough and these, none of these are good decisions that you have to make. But I do think it's, it's important to note that you talk about equity in every decision you make. And that's, that's something that we should honor around, you know, the work that we've done in this district. So thank you for that. I am going to, well, I want to just say really quickly, the equity steering committees are still running. We have our monthly meetings and we are always excited to have Shannon Dunham and Maren Goldstein represent the school committee in those equity meetings. We've been focused around a couple subcommittees. One around equity issues in remote learning, of which you know there are many. This year, for, for all the progress that we've made relationally in, in work around equity, I think some of the more technical issues around equity have really come to light this year. Wi-Fi access, language translation access. Jonathan, thank you so much for sharing about migrant students. Yes, these are, these are the, the gaps that we're seeing widen in a way that's, that's really troubling, despite all of the great work we've done in the district around building relationships and building community and a safe climate and culture for all of our students. So with that, I just want to introduce, oh, I'm sorry. And the other, the other subcommittee that we're, we are still meeting as is the subcommittee working on our relationship with the School Resource Officer and the Police Department with the public schools. So that's also still, still meeting. In fact, those subcommittees meet tomorrow again. So I'll see you there tomorrow, Shannon and Maren. So with that, I'm going to introduce two of my colleagues, Jill Collins and Hannah Elliott. And they're going to give you an update on some work that's being done in the elementary schools. I am so very blessed that they agreed to be the professional learning community facilitators for our social justice in education. Did I already say PLC? The professional learning community, we call it a PLC, and they're the facilitators. And they're going to give you some more information about the work that they're doing with their colleagues and that we're all really excited about. So Jill, Hannah, off to you.
Great, thanks so much. So I'm Hannah Elliott and I teach fourth grade at Center Peppin. And to start off, I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the social justice PLC and what our focus is. So our goal is to provide teachers and staff each month with some specific, ready-to-use mini lessons for talking about social justice issues in all of our classrooms. Each month, we're focusing on one main social justice topic. And so far this year, we've shared tools for teaching about Indigenous Peoples' Day, the truths and myths around the first Thanksgiving, introducing gender identity and pronouns, and the winter solstice as sort of a way to, to shift the focus away from holidays and find something a little more universal that we can all celebrate together. Some of our upcoming topics this year include diverse abilities, Black Lives Matter and Black History Month, Women's History, climate change, gender and pride, and activism. And our hope is that teachers can try to weave these discussions and lessons into spaces that are already carved out in their day. For example, morning meeting, possibly making connections with the caring schools curriculum that we are using this year, our social studies curriculum, or even making connections to reading and writing. And my colleague Jill is going to share a little more about the rationale behind the PLC.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jill Collins. I teach fourth grade at Center Peppin. And I'm thrilled to be doing this work and I'm, yes, as Hannah said, I'm going to talk a little bit about the rationale. So there's no getting around that there is upheaval and hatred and inequality in our country and in our world. And our students, whether they're in kindergarten or fourth grade, are citizens of our world and they're watching and they're hearing about it and they're living it. So it's really our responsibility as educators to teach and acknowledge the truths and untruths, to teach students how to think critically, to look at both sides, to have empathy for people who aren't like them, to talk about these topics respectfully and even stand up and advocate when they see injustice in their school and in their communities. We've had a great turnout so far at our PLC. We've had, we have administrators who are a part of it. We have some adjustment counselors. We have teachers. And we're hoping to recruit more people as the year goes on. But I think we have a total of 13 or 15 at this point, so it's been a really good start. And while there's a lot of knowledge among those who have joined, it's also important to note that we are all wanting to learn more. We've acknowledged to each other that talking about social justice topics can feel uncomfortable. It can take us out of our comfort zone. It can leave us feeling vulnerable. But we're all in this together and we can support each other through it. And that's kind of the message that we've been trying to share with, with the staff. We've been speaking at monthly faculty meetings. We've, we've talked at both elementary school council meetings and we're, we're leading a professional development workshop, Hannah, Julianne and I, on, on Thursday this week. And we also helped to develop the elementary schools district letter that went out about the social justice work that we're doing. So a lot is happening and it's really exciting. Each month. Each month, we send an email to teachers to let them know about the teaching tool and the ideas that they can try in their classroom, as well as other resources that they can learn from about each, or learn about regarding each topic. And then we've been trying to get some feedback from them as well about what's gone well, what's been hard, so that we can, you know, continue to work with it as we move through the year. Over time, we're hoping that we can add more family education newsletters, other kinds of forums, and also add more professional development, get more feedback, do more curriculum development, and even activism within, within the school district. So that's kind of what we're working on and what we hope to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm so proud to be their colleague. So impressed. Thank you so much. That's really, we are, we've been talking for years in the equity committees about how we need to start with our very youngest students. And this year, with the energy that Jill and Hannah are bringing to this work, I feel like, oh, this is happening. This is real. So it's just, it feels like it's, it's a long time coming. And they're just, they're bringing such energy and such expertise to this work that it's, it's really impressive to me and inspiring. Thank you too so much. All right, and then I'm going to introduce, are you ready, Cindy?
Yes.
Now I'm going to introduce Cindy Mohica. Cindy is our new Diversity and Inclusion Liaison at East Hampton High School. You, you, you will all have remembered Asher Hamilton and the presentations that Asher used to give to the school committee. We miss Asher so much. She's doing wonderfully on Cape Cod.
Yes.
But we are so blessed to have Cindy now. So I'm going to turn it over to Cindy to discuss some things about what's going on at the high school.
First, I do have a little presentation, like you can see it, because it's like very data-oriented, what I'm going to talk about. So if I, someone can allow me to share my screen, I would really appreciate it.
You're good.
So can anyone see this?
Yes.
Okay. So again, my name is Cindy Mohica, and I kind of replace Asher Hamilton at the high school. And this is what we have been working, you know, I'm going to talk about who we are, what is under the Diversity and Inclusion Center, what have we been working on. These are very data-oriented. This is from DESI information. This is some surveys. And first of all, I want to tell who we are and why. So the Diversity and Inclusion Center has been part of East Hampton High School from the spring of 2017. The center was established from a recommendation by the Internal General's report, and his findings were multiple inequitable problems at the high school. Since then, the center had recruited multiple volunteers for projects that reflect the EHS students' population. The center has worked directly with parents and students, offering safe play for everyone who walk in the center. The center concentrate in, on offering and providing service to minorities, my generalized communities. One thing that it happened in 2019, we got a granted, a grant from Safe Passages called the Healthy Relationship Grant. And this covers 13 hours in the Diversity and Inclusion Center. So, so what is part of the Diversity Center right now? So we have the Diversity Leadership Club, the Healthy Relationship Program, the Student Support Team, I'm part of that, data collection activities, Leadership Classroom, Youth Art Program, the Learning Center, and we're providing support in translation and connecting with families and students. What the center has been working on is the Youth Art Program has been running for the past six weeks with EHS students and surrounding high schools. This one is running because of East Hampton City Arts, thanks to them. Diversity Leadership Club is open an hour for three days a week. We have helped students with college information, any need to come up with, that will come up in those meetings. Data collecting for the first semester. This data is to detect which areas the district needs to focus to be equitable and to help make better decisions when students at EHS need help with technology, mental health, academics, and family support. Creating connections with families and students around the city, working directly with students at the Learning Center. This has helped create a connection with the students and the staff, providing support to the students. And that will be at the Student Support Team at EHS and looking new ways. So we have established a website, a Facebook page, and a YouTube channel. So these are our current data. And the city is Hampton. This is just a visual data. The green represent the white population right now at East Hampton. And this is our school district staffing. So this, the green is the white. The red is the black, and the blue is the Hispanic, the dark blue. And then the light blue will be any other mixed race. This is data academically endangered. Oh, sorry. That went too fast. Oh. Oh, no. There you go. Oh, no. There we go. So we can see here that the first danger is, oh, no, this is not good. Sorry. The Hispanics and African-Americans are still affected by learning, how we do learning and provide services to them. This is not to pinpoint anybody. This is just a data, just reflecting from DESI. So this is not, you know, blaming anybody or, you know, saying somebody's not doing their job. It's just data reflected. And the average student, the residents, this is a ratio that I did. And this is the population right now that has been affected. So this is a map from East Hampton. This is no house indicating for addresses. It's just a ratio of East Hampton and which property. Now you can see that right now. And I can provide this to you. So then we do an enrollment data for the last five years. Of course, we did lose a lot of students in the district this semester, and we also lose students at the high school. This is dangerous because we can lose both things. We can lose funding, teaching, and actually, we can lose potential more families coming to East Hampton, which is a big problem for our city. So this is just data showing you how we're doing in our district. So these are the areas that need improvement for more equitable. We need more data collecting, definitely to make better decisions in our district. We need data collecting from my, our IT department so we know how to connect properly, engaging, and actively participate in school. Learning centers for my generalized community. This is something that we have to work on. We would like to collect data from parents and students about remote learning. So we may learn how to be better help them. Better communication between the schools and the parents. Some family have trouble with English, and we need a better system to communicate with them. The diversity and inclusion position, you know, I think this should be more district-wise so we can actually serve better and collect more data around the whole district and present it like I presented it tonight. We need more diverse staff. Minority students feel less likely to identify with East Hampton High School teachers due to the lack of representation, as you can, you saw before. Have available more mental health information for teens and their families other than our school staff. I think that's very important in this COVID times. Time and funding. I'm not going to go through all this. This is basically a description of what I have been doing. And I'm a liaison, not a coordinator. So I think that is why we have to present it to the public. We should have this position as a district in a bigger scale. So the time invested is good to collect all this data because we can answer many questions. Which students are we failing to? How to avoid excessive absence, which is a big problem right now in our district? Who is in AP classes? Where there's non-to-zero, known, very, very low percentage of minority students right now in AP classes. That's a problem of equality right there. What do our students need? How can we better connect with students and family of all backgrounds? What kind of resources we need financially, programs, and what we're lacking in our district? And of course, everyone is like, so how are we going to fund this? Because that's the first question. So I did, did a research on this. I spent a lot of time looking to this. So for how we can finance a position like this or any kind of, you know, inclusive and diversity position, Mass Diversity and Inclusion for a Better Education, they have a lot of programs. The Mass, the Massachusetts Diversity and Inclusion State, they do have grants for these kind of programs. And right now, we should, there's a pilot program going on. It says Educators Workforce Diversity. These are for teachers diversification pilot program that we, as a district, can apply to and bring more diverse teachers to our district, which is very important, not only for our minority kids, but for everyone. Everyone benefits from diversity. And these are the two grants that I want to focus on, which is the OSAR Inclusive Opportunity Grant Program and the Mass Humanity Grant. These are big grants that we can get to provide services to our students. So programs, the Diversity and Inclusion Center is working to offer a permanent learning center. I think this is something that we should be available to have in the high school after school, when we're back to school, or like wirely. We have to create something because we did a lot of discovery with the learning center. We need a cultural library to be online and available to all students. Mentorship program, and then, not yet. College and other diversity programs from Massachusetts. I've been in contact with Smith College and the five colleges' diversity centers. Leadership curriculum and employment and internship for minorities. And I will suggest a full-time youth leader exclusively serve different areas and minorities. So this is my summary, and I think that's it. And I'm going to stop sharing right now. And if you have any questions for me, here.
Again, I'm like, I'm humbled by my colleagues. So thank you so much, Cindy, Jill, Hannah. It's so, so incredible to have people to work on these huge issues that, as you know, are affecting every piece of, of people's lives right now. So thank you so much, Cindy. Thank you so much, Jill. Thank you, Hannah. I am blessed to call you my colleagues. And thank you, school committee. Okay, any questions?
Dr. Leclerc.
I, I just wanted to echo Julianne's sentiments to Hannah and Jill and Cindy. It's great, the work that they are doing for our district this year. It's, it's so needed. And I think we're, we're wrapped up in so many other issues. And, and as I listen to them speak tonight, it reminds me that there are so many intersections to the work that we're doing. And I, I think it's just wonderful to, to know that, that we're thriving in this area because of the work that so many people are contributing to the district. So thank you again, and thank you, Julianne, for coordinating all of this. I think it's tremendous. And, and even as I was just listening to Cindy, Julianne, Julianne and I were on a call with, interestingly enough, the Collaborative for Education the other day. Because we are being asked to partner with the Department of Education and the Collaborative in North Hampton on a family engagement program. It's, it's something that is being done in the eastern part of the state, and they were looking for someone in the western part of the state that could jump in. And somehow, East Hampton's metrics met their need. So as, as I was listening to Cindy's presentation, a lot of things were starting to connect for me, and I thought, ooh, we've got to pull Cindy into that.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the metric that, that worked for them was that Cindy was involved in the UMass Translation and Interpretation Program, certificate project. And so because we were lucky, lucky enough that she was interested in doing that, that the department was like, well, maybe you should do this other thing, too. And also, let's figure out a way for us to pay for it for you. So it's really.
It's tremendous.
Yeah.
And I, and I appreciate Hannah and Jill, you know, just considering that they're doing this in addition to their regular teaching
Yes.
work, which in and of itself is challenging this year. And, and all new, as, as the teachers on this committee will attest, to take on something more for your fellow colleagues, I think, is, is tremendous. So much appreciation to all of those folks. Thank you all.
Laurie. Thank you, Laurie.
I just want to continue the echo chamber because Julianne said we were blessed to have Cindy, Jill, and Hannah. And I couldn't agree more. But I would also like to say we are truly blessed to have Julianne Levin at the helm of all this. So thank you so much.
I, I honestly, I need to stand behind them.
Marissa? For some reason, we can't hear you.
For whatever reason, these headphones aren't working tonight. Yes, big applause for everyone and great thanks for all this really hard work. You know, and thinking about the committee's time as a resource and how we equitably use our time. You know, I've, I've been aware of how much, how many minutes we've spent talking about sports for a very small group of students across, given the proportion of our district. And I have been concerned about ways that other students who aren't athletes are going to be able to feel connected with each other and with the district. So I was really interested to hear about this Youth Art Club and the Diversity Leadership Club. And I'd love to hear a little bit more about those and if there's things that we can do to support those opportunities or expand them. So I would say that is one thing. And then the other thing that occurred to me while looking at this really interesting data that you presented to me, I had been concerned about some of the reports about failures at the high school, students who are really struggling academically. And perhaps, Dr. Leclerc, for a future meeting, it might be useful to get some report back on how are students doing? And I don't know if this is data that we have access to, but can we break that down against these various demographic markers?
Okay, so I will answer each question. The Youth Art Project is a collaboration from the Southampton City Art. The president, the coordinator, Pasqualeina, contacted me. And this is a BIPOC, BIPOC project for students to give voices to students. So we have a, we have multiple nationalities, but they are all for minority. So this has been working for six weeks. And now, in December 14, they're going to have a show. And it's going to be a live internet logging, and they're going to present their work. It's going to be a poem, a visual art project that the five students did. These are students from one freshman, two juniors, one sophomore, and I believe only one senior. And like I said, these are students from different districts, including Hampton. There's two students from East Hampton. And it was offered to 10 students, but due to the lack of connection that we're having with families at this point, that's the result of it. This program is going to be offered next fall, too. So we're going to have 10 seats. We have a professional. We have a professional, uh, a Montholly teacher. She actually thought, uh, taught them singing, writing, uh, composition, videography and, um, they, they actually wrote some songs too. So, um, so that was that. The Diversity Leadership Club, uh, has been open for students at the high school. I open a link Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursday, and that's open four to five. Um, and we leave that link always open. It's just the same link all the time. I send a reminder every, every, you know, day for the students to click in and just log in. The goal is for next semester to actually offer a leadership class in this, um, for the students. There's a whole curriculum that I created for the students and I think that's something that we really, really need at the high school. Is an actual leadership program so we can give voices to the students. Because of remote learning, I discovered that there is a lot of, um, missing, um, critical thinking from the students, um, because they don't have that, they're not actually learning that in the classroom. So they need a way to learn that. Um, so that's that. About the other data, I think you have access to that through Power Schools. That's how I got my data, Power Schools, Desi, and I think Mr. Evans actually, um, helped me with that.
Yeah, Cindy, I wanted to add, um, the, one of the conversations that we had had about that data was around the geographical clusters. Um, and that we could, we could see that there were clusters of students, um, who had failed multiple classes in quarter one who were in, um, publicly subsidized housing areas.
So most, yeah, most of the students are, I, I really didn't want to like, I just wanted to do it. But basically those, um, if you look at the map we, I can provide to you, it's actually our lower income sections in East Hampton who are suffering. Um, and I have data from, I've been to a few family houses doing a little survey before I presented this. And it goes from not receiving a, a laptop all the way to 10 tickets to the IT and never getting back to them. So I, it's like a different things, uh, wifi, prices of wifi, um, lack of information that they can actually get help from the school system. I don't know if you want to talk about that Julianne. Um, but there's, there's a lack, a lack of information that parents and, you know, guardians don't know about from the school.
Yeah, I think that the, um, we've talked a lot about translation and interpretation and, um, how there are families that we just have not been, um, able to communicate with as, as they've needed us to. Um, so that's something that we're working on. Um, and I think also just in terms of internet access, it's, you know, just having conversations last week about, um, you know, you can get basic internet access, right? But you can also get like a higher version of internet access that, that has more bandwidth and that if you're, um, a family that has basic internet, um, versus a, a family that has, has more internet, a higher bandwidth, um, then that's actually impacting your access to your education right now. Um, so that's, those are some of the conversations we're trying to have with families, you know, finding out like, well, what's your internet plan and, and how can we make that better for you? And, um, and yeah, it takes, um, it takes a lot of communication. It takes a lot of back and forth and, um, our resources, certainly the tech department is stretched thin, um, in terms of resources and, uh, we've been, um, we've been really trying hard to, to not have this be, um, you know, something that's so greatly impacting the families that are already marginalized by, um, by the systems.
So I just have a quick, um, I know Laurie has a question, but I have a quick clarifying question. Did you say that some people have 10 tickets without an answer? With the IT department?
Well, it's, it's, it's not 10 tickets, but you know, like a multiple.
Yeah, I think it just means that like, there are some problems that are so complicated that it's going, that it goes like on and on and on. Um, it's just like, it's not, they are problems that you can just fix right away. It's like we have.
It's like, you know, one, you know, the, the computer didn't turn on.
Okay.
Computer froze, you know?
Okay. So it's not a matter of not being responded to. It's a matter of just multiple problems.
With one computer, yeah, like freezing up.
Okay.
Not trying, not connecting to the Google Classroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Laurie?
And I was concerned to hear that some people still don't have laptops or Chromebooks. And then I was really listening to the fact that it was a communication issue. And I'm not sure if our district already knows about it and uses it, but the program Talking Points, which is a great way to get in touch with parents of all different languages.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have, we have an interpretation, um, service. I think that the, the, the issue more is that without getting, without having our big shipment of Chromebooks um, and having students all on one platform. Um, but that's been, that's been, just been a real struggle for us. Like we're, we definitely are down to, you know, our last devices to, to exchange with older devices. Um, you know, to, to make sure that students have something to, to be on, but we're hopeful that that shipment of Chromebooks is coming in really soon and we're going to be able to fix a lot of those problems, um, just by having some more, um, reliable devices for students to have.
But I would suggest you just look into that Julianne, that Talking Points. Because you don't need a person. If teachers are having trouble like with students in the classroom, it's just sending a text message and it's interpreted right away. And it can be continual contact with families without having to get a third party. And it's very helpful.
Gotcha. Thank you so much Laurie.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so. Um, so yeah, so as we move on and continue this, um, this work, new challenges present themselves like a global pandemic. Um, but, um, we are still here doing this work with you and thank you so much for listening to us year after year and supporting us as we continue to do this.
Thank you.
And I, I hope we can bring, um, this team back again, you know, in a few months and maybe give us an update again, because I don't think it's a one and done. And I think the work that they're doing is ever evolving and
Yeah.
and hopefully as we can get students back in school, then we can start engaging in a different way. So I think it would be important to have, have them come back, hopefully in the spring.
Right, right.
Cindy, is, is it possible for you to send the school committee that PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, and if you need the actual percentage of the visual graphics, I also, also, you know, have them, but if you don't need it, it's just visual graphic. You can actually see it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And I did, um, I did ask, Mr. Evans was, was texting me and saying that he can come to a future meeting to address some of the questions that I think Marissa brought up. Um, because they have been working on that, that data, Marissa, about, um, failures. So maybe we can put him on the agenda for January.
I think so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm wondering, just as we're saying that, if we should do it for our September 22nd?
December 22nd?
Yeah. Did I say September? December. So.
If, if you want to, that's fine.
I think so.
I thought you wanted that to be a brief meeting. That's why I wasn't going to schedule a presentation that night.
Well, the failures, the failures are, are, um, important to talk about. So we're roping you into the 22nd, sir.
And I'm, I'm aware of the high school just because it happened to come across our desk via a parent email. Um, but I would also be interested to hear how students are doing in the other buildings.
Yeah, and I think the high, the, um, middle school and Julianne can correct me if I'm wrong. I think their grades just closed last week. So they're, they're gathering that data right now, but if we wait until the 27th.
That would be good.
And the elementary closes, the elementary's closed on the 11th. So they'll be in a better place, um, to report on all of them on the 22nd.
Good. So the 22nd it is.
As long as you're not also talking about sports on that night.
So if I could just add, I just wanted to, you know, really appreciate, um, I, I don't think this is just individuals. I think it's also just shows the work that this district has done, that we have four people presenting on equity and all of the work that's happening across the district. I think it just, um, you know, of course, as individuals, you are all great and very much appreciated the work that you're doing here. Uh, but it also just, I think that the, um, more people are able to do more work. And so it just shows how much we're, this is becoming more and more a core of what we're doing in East Hampton Public Schools. And so I just think it's really tremendous. Um, it also shows the places where we've got more work to do because we have more people looking at it and seeing issues and raising those issues. Um, so bringing this, these points, uh, forward, even the ones that are not, excuse me, always the, the best points, um, helps us bring light to the challenges that we still have as a district. Um, but it also really shows the, the forward motion that we have. And so I just want to thank everybody involved, um, in the work that you're doing. So thank you so much.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you all.
Good luck with the rest of your evening.
Thank you. You can stick around if you want.
Okay.
So I just wanted to talk a few minutes about some COVID, um, updates because I know we have still several families on the call. And I know people listen to these meetings to get information about where we are in our thinking. And so I wanted to share. Um, I think in our last meeting, we said when we closed and went to full remote, we said we would take a look at our numbers again. And I think from just an anecdotal, um, point of view, we all know that the numbers are high. Um, as a, um, COVID response team, as a school committee, we have access to a daily dashboard that we have, um, of information that's collected on the, the daily um, numbers for Hamden, Hampshire and Franklin Counties. And we have an agreed upon, a tentative agreement of a metric that we, um, kind of use as our guide. And so that number that pushes us to close is 23 cases per 100,000. And for the people on this call that are wondering where that number comes from, it comes from a website called theglobalepidemic.com, which is based on Brown University's School of Public Health, which is a metric, um, that is used, um, throughout the country. So I, I just, I like to base information and data, and I'm trying to share with people that we are not randomly deciding to close or open school. So we look at, um, that metric and that metric was, um, in the, around 21 when we had our last school committee meeting and it was increasing on a seven day rolling average. The number was going up every day. So we knew that it would be at 23 fairly quickly and it did reach 23 either the next day or the day after. And, and we didn't want to be the district that closed on a dime. We wanted to be the district that told you what was coming. Um, and so tonight, I want to tell you where the number is right now. The number as of today is 32 cases per 100,000. So that means, I want to be very clear, that means that we are not opening back up anytime soon. Based on the number, the school committee has, has tentatively agreed upon with the union is 23. We are nowhere near 23. We are at 32 per 100,000. So that means, and, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I can look and I can tell um, every day that the number is going up. We're in an upward trend. And we're looking at, particularly, we're looking at seven to 14 day rolling averages, which again, statistically, evidence wise, um, we are, we are steeped in logic on that. And the trend is going up. So I can surmise without another meeting in the coming days or early next week, I can tell you, it's not likely that we're bringing students back before the holiday break unless everyone decides to change their behavior immediately. Um, but we're not, you know, the epidemiologists and the physicians out there, if I'm listening to the news correctly, are alluding to the fact that we may not even have seen the Thanksgiving numbers yet. We may be at the very start of that. So I can estimate based on the trends that we're seeing on the data that we have, that we're not going to be opening. So I want to be clear to people. And it's not because we don't want to open. I want to open. I say it, I think every school committee meeting. If I could bring special populations back tomorrow, I would. But the number that is agreed upon with the union prevents us from coming back into the building at that, at that, based on this, this data that we have in front of us.
And you're just not, we're just not a little over. 32 is a lot over.
Right, we're not on the cusp.
Yeah.
And if you keep in perspective, two weeks ago, we were saying, well, we're going to need to close because we were at 21. And now we're at 32 two weeks later. So, um, so this number is going up. And I think that based on all the information we have coming at us from medical professionals, this is not going to start trending downward until after we get through the holiday season. I know that in the data, I, in the plan that I presented to you, we were hoping to bring special populations back on January 4th, but I want to be transparent with people because I know this involves work schedules and daycare. It is not looking likely that we will be able to bring students back on January 4th because we will not have seen the end of the climb after people choose to do what they're going to do over the holidays. And I just don't see that our number is going to be 23 or lower. I would like to be wrong. And please call me out if I am wrong. And, you know, we can fix it, but I think that realistically, we have to wait a few weeks after the holiday break before we can start planning on having students return to the building. Laurie?
I appreciate all of that, that you just said, Dr. Leclerc, but it's important to say that it's not just because of discussions with the union, it's because of public safety. And I think that if people just hear that it's union driven, they're getting the wrong impression. And I want to make it clear that it's, we're not talking to an epidemiologist who is a union member. We are talking to science based facts. And it isn't just because of what the union is saying.
Right. And I think to back up your point Laurie, the governor today announced a rollback on the phase, which East Hampton had already done, but now they're going to do that statewide. The state will go back to phase three, step one as of Sunday. So it's another indicator that we're on this upward trend. And this upward trend is putting us, if anyone wants to look up this globalepidemic.com website, it's putting us in the red. Um, maybe on the Massachusetts map, we're in yellow. But that is, that is one piece of data that we look at. We're looking at a lot of sources of information that are steeped in evidence. So I want to be clear with people that it is not looking like we are going to get students in the building after the holiday break.
Right.
You know, we will, I think in our, in our first January meeting, and I don't know what the date is off the top of my head.
The eighth.
Yeah, I think that we.
Sorry, my, my bad, the 12th.
The 12th. I think that's the opportunity at that meeting for us to review the metrics and hopefully we see the metrics either starting to stabilize or starting to turn downward. And then we can have the conversation about bringing students back. Um, you know, I will share with the teachers, you know, what my hopes and plans are so that, you know, for preparation purposes, they can begin. they can begin planning what they need to do. I mean, ideally, I would like to get special populations in by the end of January, beginning of February.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, and, and get the learning centers back up and running. And if we could get some other grades in, I'd like to do that as well. But I can put a plan forward to you in January with that. And I don't mean to be evasive with families, you know. But I think that until the numbers begin to stabilize, it is senseless for us to keep having the conversation when, you know, we're giving people false hope. Because I, I think that there's a number that we have to get to, to feel that we are ensuring the safety of our staff and our students. And I, I hear all the pleas that people are making. And I know that people are saying, well, why can't we come back? The ones that want to come back can come back and the ones that don't want to come back, don't have to come back. Well, that's going to be true once we get to that stabilized threshold that we're trying to meet. Right now, we're in a surge and we can't, we can't put our staff in a vulnerable position by forcing them to go into school. And people may feel that they're, you know, they can, they may feel like their child is okay to go back into school because maybe their child is very healthy and they don't feel that they have that vulnerability. But we also have other aspects that we need to consider. So that's what I wanted to share out and I, I opened it to the floor.
Thank you. Marissa?
This is a bit of an aside, but I believe we added the December 22 meeting to enable us to discuss metrics for that potential January 4th opening. And given that seems extremely unlikely, I don't want to single-handedly require us to meet on December 22nd because I requested that data presentation. That would certainly be just as relevant at our January 12th meeting. So if we don't have any other action items, I just wanted to be clear that I would be fine with that material being presented at our first of the year meeting.
I agree. Does everybody agree with that? And we won't have the, the September 22nd? We'll just wait for the January 12th. Do I have a thumbs up from everybody for that? Okay. All right. So we'll do that. Okay.
To clarify, Cynthia, we're going to cancel the December 22th meeting because you've again, it's to me the September. So it's.
I didn't say it again, did I?
Yes, you did.
Oh my God. Where is that coming from? I don't know. Maybe I want to move the clock back so we can start again. I don't know. Okay. So our school committee meeting will be January 12th and that is when we will have the presentation. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Sad news, please families, everybody, if we want to get back in school, you've got to, you've got to forget about vacations. I mean, everybody around the nation has been pleading, I'm pleading, we are hearing everybody's heartbreak. You want your children back in school. Let's get them back in school. And that is going to take not traveling and not mixing and matching over the holidays. Find some way to meet with your family over Zoom, have a big Christmas party. But do it virtually. We, we just can't because the more we gather, the higher these numbers are going to go. All right. Thank you. Anything else before we go on to Matters for Action? I do have some good news. Dr. Leclerc has texted me that we do not need our executive session. So at the end of this, we will be adjourning from this meeting. So that is good news. Jonathan?
One quick thing under other, just to echo us, something that I think Marissa alerted, alluded to earlier. In terms of thinking about future meetings, you know, we have talked a lot about sports. I would be very interested to also hear about some of the activities that I know students have been missing that are, you know, take places in other parts of the school, be it the theater department or the arts or what have you. I would just be really curious to hear how the students are being supported and if there's anything that we might want to do to support them.
Excellent. Okay. So that sounds good. So if we have nothing else, we'll go to Matters for Action and payroll. And we will get out of here. Marissa?
All right. I move to approve the school payroll dated 11/19/2020 in the amount of $517,810.14.
Okay, Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/19/2020 in the amount of $607,386.16.
Second up?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Oh, Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I move to approve school payroll dated 12/3/2020 in the amount of $545,168.58.
Second up?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/3/2020 in the amount of $170,930.47.
I'll second that.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye. Sorry.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Okay. If we have nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
I second that.
Everybody seconds that. Okay. Here we go. Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches.
Okay. Go ahead, Shannon.
I just did. Shannon Dunham?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Have a good night. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. Please be safe, be well.
Happy holidays.
Let's get everybody in, back in school. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.